We are in open session. Whereas the Essex County School Board had convened a closed meeting at this date pursuant to an affirmative revote and in accordance with provisions of the Freedom of Information Act, and we are as Section 2.2-3711, parentheses A, parentheses 1, the Code of Virginia. While the school board is not making sure of this school board that such a closed meeting was conducted within Virginia law, now therefore be a result that the Essex County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meetings to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered. The clerk of the board will now certify board members. I certify.
I certify.
Uh, clerk of the board will do a roll call. You're here.
You're here.
You're here.
You're here.
May everyone please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Shemari? Can I get a motion on closed session agenda items?
Madam Chair, our motion to accept the personnel agenda as presented regarding seven appointments, five transfers, four amendments, one coaches slash athletic stipend, and three volunteers.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the closed session agenda items. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We do want to do one addition to the agenda. It will be action item H, and it will be an addendum to the Pay and Classification booklet. We will discuss that when the item arises. Additionally, Ms. Bundy would like to attend the meeting virtually, and according to our policy, that requires a vote of approval from the board. So, do I have a motion to allow Ms. Bundy to participate virtually? Do I have a second?
Second.
Do I have a motion in a second to allow Ms. Bundy to participate virtually? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Welcome, Ms. Bundy. Great. All right. I think we are ready for the superintendent's report.
Okay. I want to spend a little time tonight talking about the coming school year. Many of you all have heard me discuss the Senate Bill 1303, and whether or not the governor would sign it, which mandates in the code five days of in-person instruction for the coming school year. So again, the governor signed the bill, and the bill also includes the option for school divisions to offer virtual instruction. So, we're in the process of asking principals to talk to their staff members about this year managing virtual instruction and in-person instruction, for the most part concurrently. Right now, what we're exploring is offering virtual, offering in-person instruction and to offer an Essex Virtual Academy. So essentially, this would require us to work with a third-party entity that would provide virtual instruction for our students, but they would be Essex students. So, the work in this regard has started with the principals appointing one individual from each building, one teacher, to work with Dr. Jandler's administrative staff in looking at three different programs, three different learning management systems. Virtual Virginia, which is a learning management system hosted and supported by the state of Virginia, the Department of Education. Virginia Virtual, which is a private learning management system, and Edgenuity. These recommendations thus far were made to me by the head of Technology for the Virginia Department of Education. So we're going to have this committee examine these three providers, these three learning management systems, and to make a recommendation to us about the system that can best meet our needs. We are also in the process of developing a survey that will go out this week to begin to capture information by that of our families regarding their interests in either virtual instruction or in-person instruction. So, that's the approach that we're going to take at this point. Question?
Yes. At one point, we were talking about a possible consortium within the region. Is that fallen through?
That is, yes, it has fallen through. We had Caroline County was taking the initiative to host a virtual academy, and they have indicated recently that they choose not to do that. I've talked to colleagues, my colleagues in the region, and there were a lot of questions, or questions and answers, but I know we need to move forward in terms of beginning this process. So, again, our approach is to allow our teachers to handle in-person instruction and work with a third-party learning management system to create an Essex Virtual Academy and enroll our students through that approach. The actual learning management system company, those details are to come.
And have we considered putting a parent on that committee group that's working on, just to have that perspective?
Sure, we can do that. We can do that. We can definitely put a parent on the committee just to get more perspective. So, that is, that is the approach thus far, and I will be bringing additional information out to, back out to the board to keep them updated. I'll play it on writing to our staff about some of these details and to our parents. The reason why I think it is logical not to ask our teachers to do both is because in the fall, there will not be a planning day. Our kids will be in the building five days a week. Our teachers have done yeoman's work to get us to where we are today. I just don't see it as feasible to have our teachers continue to try to do both.
Dr. Thomas, this is a point of clarification. When it comes to enrollment, if the students are virtual, they're still enrolled in Essex County Public Schools?
That's an excellent question, and so, yes and no. You could have a student enrolled in a virtual program within your locality that might not be your student. And so, part of what we're looking into, not to try to get too technical, but one of the things we're looking into is establishing a multi-online provider. That designation would allow us to create a virtual academy so that a child could be, live in our locality and take their courses virtually. As a matter of fact, kids from outside the county could even, and we'd have to work through those details regarding tuition or anything like that, but this approach would allow us to do both so that we don't lose students that seek a virtual option in another locality with some other company. The concern is, again in the bill, that we have the option of offering a virtual academy or a virtual instructional approach. I think it's prudent for us to do so, so that we can ensure a steady student population, steady enrollment. Also, the ESER funds that we have received, that we will continue to receive from ESER 2 to ESER 3, can be used to pay for our students to participate. So for example, I'm not suggesting that we're going to go the Virginia Virtual route, but one possibility is to enter into an agreement with Virtual Virginia or a like company, establish an MOP, multi-online provider. They would charge us a fee, so that would be essentially a portion of the state funding that we receive. But we can offset that with the ESER funds, so we would be able to ensure that that student remains an Essex student. So that's, that's the scope of the plan at this point, and we're going to further refine it with the work of the committee, but I want to put that out there to the, into the public domain, so people will have a sense as to our plans, because it'll be August before you know it. And I think that's it. Any other questions?
Dr. Thomas, I just want to make sure I'm clear. So what you're saying is that come fall, we are going back to school full-time, but instead of the teachers teaching virtually, there'll be a commu, well, a virtual academy that the students will attend, and there may be students from all over on that, in that virtual academy, but there'll still be students here.
Correct. Essex, we will still have students, because we will have students that will want the virtual option. I know that.
Well, I'm sure it will.
But if we don't have an academy of sorts, we could lose that student to some, some other student.
Right, right. I think that sounds like, now what is your sense for, and you may not have an answer to this yet, but once they enroll in the academy, will they have the flexibility to, or are we going to say you either do one or the other at the beginning of the year, and that's it for the year, or?
I would like to take the position that we, a student makes a semester commitment, you know, so a bit longer than where we were this year on a quarterly basis, a semester commitment. But again, this commitment we're going to put into place, the purpose of that group is to help inform this process. Mrs. Garle's got one teacher already that's given us a report on each program, Mr. Daniels, so he's been quite enthusiastic about giving us feedback about this particular approach. But I think it's wise, yes, to have parents on there, maybe, you know, some students to help give us a sense, because while our teachers won't necessarily be a part of that instruction, I did talk to the principals about being able to move the division in terms of our in-person students into a virtual posture in the event we have a COVID issue or like for, 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 um, for snow and climate weather. So, you know, from that standpoint, you know, if we, instead of having to shut down and be inactive, to be able to call upon our teachers under those specific scenarios to be able to continue to operate. So, that's the thinking about it right now, trying to have the best of both worlds, but being certainly mindful of challenges that our teachers have experienced in managing both, and being supportive of our students who have different, who have had different experiences, different interests regarding the two modalities of instruction.
How does, um, how does our block schedule at the high school work with the virtual learning schedule?
Well, I have Mr. Marfield here that can, if you want to know the details of their schedule?
No, I just, I mean, if our kids are on a block, in other words, they're doing, you were talking about making a semester decision, but a semester at the high school is a whole year of four classes.
Correct, which would make even more sense to do it at a semester level at the high school, because they could complete one term.
So, on the virtual, can they do an entire year in one semester?
Yes, I mean, they, yes, yes.
And then the other question is, and you don't have to answer this just consideration, extracurricular activities and sports and those kinds of things.
Yeah, those students would still be permitted to participate in extracurriculars.
Because they're Essex students.
Because they're Essex students. So, I want to provide some direction moving forward, so parents understand the options. We will settle on a particular learning management system product as soon as we can.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Report from our student representative, Shemari.
Hello, good evening to everyone.
Good evening.
Here are my reports for tonight. The third quarter has come to an end, and the fourth, the fourth and final quarter has started. SOL remediation has also begun after school for any students who need extra one-on-one help from teachers to better prepare for any upcoming SOLs. With the approval of spring sports being held over the past couple of weeks, many students have begun to prepare for their sports by practicing in their free time and simply gathering the gear and essentials they may need to perform these sports at their highest potential. The National Honor Society has succeeded in yet another drive. This drive was a food drive that was coordinated by NHS member Caitlin Sinner. We managed to gather 501 total pounds of food, with 385 pounds being mixed groceries, and the other 116 pounds being water, drinks, and juices. The Student Council Association has just recently released applications for positions in the council for the upcoming school year. These applications are provided for students in their Google Classroom and are in the front office at the high school. If your child or someone you may know is a rising eighth grader, please inform them that they are able to go to the high school and pick up an application if they are interested in being part of the SCA. The SCA has also started a monthly teacher recognition. Each month, a Google form is posted on Google Classroom for students to go in and vote for a teacher who they think is best for this title, and also lists three detailed reasons why the teacher deserves this recognition. The Teacher of the Month for March is Mrs. Floyd. And I only have one concern tonight. Some concerns were brought up regarding incorrect information on report cards. Students have brought to teachers' attentions that the wrong grade is printed on their report card, and in some cases, a grade for a certain class was not printed at all on their report card. Teachers have been trying to resolve the issue by reaching out to the guidance office and figuring out what the problem may be. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Shemari has attached to the board doc's agenda, Shemari has provided for us a picture of the National Honor Society, some of the members, with all the food they've collected and everything, and we appreciate that, and so we'd be encouraged to people to go and look, and that might be the same picture that was on the, was in the Rampant Times also, so. Congratulations. Consent agenda. May I get a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I have a second agenda.
Do I have a second? Do I have a motion in a second? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we invite public comment. Public comment at board meetings is just one of many avenues for communication, and the board recognizes and appreciates the importance of input from and communication with the public who represent. The board invites members of the public who wish to address the board to sign up prior to the start of the meeting. The board will allow each individual to speak up to five minutes to express their views, and will set aside a maximum of 30 minutes for public address. If they respect that time limitation, the clerk of the board will enforce it. Please understand that the board will not respond to questions or concerns raised during public comment, but may direct members of the Essex County Public Schools Administration to investigate such concerns or to consult with the member of the public who raises those concerns. The board also encourages members of the public who raises, excuse me, the board also encourages members of the public to utilize the process of logic complaints against individuals contained in the applicable school board policy before bringing those complaints to the board as a whole. Again, we welcome and appreciate your input. Prior to the beginning of your comment, please state your name and address to the school board. We have one person who's signed up, and that's Valerie Taylor. Good evening.
Good evening. I apologize if I offended or took off my mask, the body heat and the coolness of here is not working for me, and I need to be able to see. Good evening, Dr. Thomas, members of the board, Mrs. Saunders, and everyone assembled. I am Valerie Taylor. My address is Post Office, Box 2066, Tappahatchie, Virginia 22520. Tonight, I want to tell you all, thank you for the budget that you have presented to the board of supervisors. You have planted the seeds that can turn into a magnificent harvest for this community. Now, it is the board of supervisors, in the board of supervisors' hands, to nurture those seeds. They can nurture these seeds by approving next year's school budget. We want a magnificent harvest because our students, our families, employees, and community deserve to see this bountiful harvest. Our children need teachers who care about them, who are willing to go that extra mile, and willing to see them grow into the men and women who will serve us in some capacity in our future. These seeds will not, I repeat, these seeds will not flourish in Essex County Public Schools if our schools are not fully staffed, the correct programs are not in place, and the materials are not readily available for students and employees. I want you to see this magnificent harvest because our students are depending on us. I said us. Thank you again for creating a budget that has the potential of reaping a bountiful harvest, as long as the board of supervisors are willing to nurture these seeds. Let's watch this season of growth and see what we reap, and once we have those seeds nurtured, we will be good stewards of what they have given us. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you. Action item B, purchase of four new buses.
So we're bringing this back to your attention. We have Ms. Dr. Temple, who is prepared to answer the additional questions. The board asks for additional transparency concerning purchases of all types, large purchases in particular, and if you recall, we brought this to your attention as an information item. These buses will be purchased through ESER funds, and we'll open the floor for any questions.
I believe when we approached the situation before, or the proposition of getting the four new buses, said something about the rotation. I know we had a rotation in place, we're back on schedule with these four, correct, or?
Have we looked into at all the electric bus option, like Middlesex has done, or are we looking into it?
Yes, and Ms. Blow is here tonight to answer any questions you may have about that, so I'll ask her to give you some updates on anything she may have found out about that.
So we actually, I've reached out to Mr. Harris at Middlesex, and he has been so gracious to offer us to come and take a tour, possibly ride their buses, check out their charging stations, and we do plan to take him up on that. I'm sorry, this is so stuffy. But we do plan to take him up on that. They were on spring break last week, so we will be getting together with them.
Thank you.
So that's something that would not be done this year, but will be looked at in future years, because these quotes are for the two, uh, two gas and two diesel? That's correct. The approval for tonight that we're asking for is based on information we presented last month for the two diesel and the two gas. However, Ms. Blow has been looking at grants and different programs that she's found, that she shared information with Dr. Thomas and I about the cost of those, or just the grants to cover those. So we are gathering more information, and if you would like us to come back again to present more, we definitely can do that on the electrical buses, but we are waiting to hear. Some of those grants have not opened yet, and so, once they do open, she will definitely be applying for them.
And I appreciate that, because after looking at the report from the major car banking companies, and not just cars, it looks like that's the wave of the future. And so I commend you for looking into the possibilities of what it might be like in here in Essex County.
Right, she has found two grants thus far, one through Dominion and one through Volkswagen?
Volkswagen.
Volkswagen. So she's been looking at both of those, and looking at ways that you can actually get the charging station at 100% funding. So she's looking into all of that, and we would definitely bring you more information once that season, that time, that grant time opens up, and we can present that to you.
Thank you.
And that would be in addition to these? Yes. Thank you. And did these, and you'll have to excuse me, I didn't pull back my notes from last minute. Were these, um, pricing's done through the bid process?
It was actually through a state contract.
State contract, gotcha.
So we utilized that process.
Gotcha. Any other questions or comments? If not, do I have a motion? I have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Any further comments? All those in favor of purchasing four new buses, two gas and two diesel, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ms. Bundy, do you have a vote?
Ms. Bundy? She said she approves.
Motion is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. The 2021-2022 updated calendar. Yes. The purpose for the action item tonight is to approve an updated calendar. As I stated in the notes, we indicated the wrong symbol on the Memorial Day, so we needed to place that symbol as closed, which takes us to 179-day calendar. However, we still do meet the instructional hours of 990. Over the last several years, we've been around 1100, 1,000 to 1,100 hours, so we meet the hours as well as the seat time for the high school. So tonight, we're just asking you to update the calendar so that we can correct that to show the Memorial Day as a closed day.
One additional detail, board members asked about the calendar matching spring break.
Yes.
And Dr. Temple, you checked into that?
Yes, and I sent you all an email with the calendar of the surrounding county, which shows that the spring break does align with the other counties that attend the Northern Neck Technical Center, and I also spoke to Mr. Rose at the Northern Neck Technical Center to ensure that they were using that particular calendar that we were looking at, and he said yes, so the spring breaks do fall at the same time. Thank you. Any questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I have a second. The 2021-2022 updated calendar.
Do I have a second?
A second.
A motion in a second. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Action item C, the 2021-2022 Employee Workday Calendar and Employee Paydays. So with the approval of the updated calendar, we would like to present to you tonight the Employee Workday Calendar and Employee Payday Schedule for the upcoming school year. You have a list of the workdays broken down by cafeteria workers, paraprofessionals, 10-month employees, 11-month employees, and 12-month employees, and you also have the number of contracted days for each of those as they fall within that particular month. So we're asking for approval tonight on that. Any questions or comments?
But with the, with the summer meeting and that sort of thing that we had to do because certain students were virtual, these dates would still work, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions or comments? Do I have a motion? I have a motion and a second to approve the Workday Calendar and Paydate Schedule. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Action Item D, Expansion of In-Person Instruction.
Madam Chair, Mr. Wynn and other Board members are quiet about our ability to increase the number of students in person. We conducted a survey. There's principals, I asked the principals to conduct a survey, and the principals have identified 80 additional students that are willing, are interested in attending school on a four-day meeting pattern. We are able to do this with the revised CDC guidance of three feet and a mask, and we can begin to accommodate these students as early as tomorrow if you all approve this action item.
I just want to clarify, this would mean that any student who wanted to come four days a week would be able to come four days a week if they requested?
That's correct.
Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Correct. We would continue to clean on the schedule that we are now. It's just that we would have additional students in class not to exceed the three feet and a mask mandate. Did I answer your question, Ms. Seager? We don't have any plans to adjust anything other than adhering to the three feet and a mask protocol.
So, to pick up on what Mr. Wynn said, if suppose we have more students wanting to come, are there plans in place to accommodate them?
Yeah, this, yes. Any student, this action tonight would allow us to accommodate any student from now to the remainder of the year that expresses an interest, our student slash family expresses an interest to attend school on a four-day schedule.
Thank you.
Yes, we had, we had students that, the vast majority of our students, were coming on an AABB schedule. We had some special interest groups, students with special needs, English learners, students with 504s, siblings of any of those students. Those students were allowed to come four days. This opens it up to any person, any student that would like to attend on a four-day schedule. And so, in the survey that the principals did, they asked parents, were there students, additional students that wanted to attend on a four-day meeting pattern? And 80 students indicated that they wanted to attend on a four-day meeting pattern.
Of that 80, there are students who are not attending Essex County Public Schools at all.
Now, these are all students that were already in attendance. They just were attending on a two-day schedule versus a four-day schedule.
You need to be able to handle all that on the bus side.
Yep, I've checked with Mrs. Blow, Transportation, and Dr. Temple, and they have worked out those details.
I have no doubt that you've already worked it out. I want to publicly acknowledge. Thank you. Any other questions, concerns, comments?
Could you give me more information, Ms. Seager, about what you would like to see in the cleaning?
Perhaps with more students, I know the touching of surfaces increases, so the access to wipes for each teacher might need to increase, or, you know, some of our custodians who are in the building, they need to do more spraying of hard surfaces and cleaning bathrooms and that sort of thing, especially with more students. I know they were already there, but they're coming more frequently.
We can certainly look into, we can convey that concern to Mr. Mitchell. I will tell you that in looking at the research, they've indicated that COVID is not more prevalent on surfaces to the extent that we thought it was, that it is primarily spread through aerosol spray. But we can certainly discuss a plan with Mr. Mitchell to increase the amount of cleaning with the increase in students. Dr. Temple, let's make a note of that and talk to Mr. Mitchell.
Is that Wednesday an all-day cleaning day, or how does that work?
Yes, sir. Wednesday is a cleaning day, all day, and it's a day where teachers are spending time preparing. And I think it's safe to say the majority of our teachers are out of the building. We've asked that they allow for additional cleaning to take place on Wednesdays, given the fact that our buildings are, do not have our students attending class.
If there's no further discussion, do I have any motion? Do you want to start this tomorrow, or you want to start up the rest?
We're ready to go. We've been prepping ever since Mr. Wynn asked the question of us. We have been prepping and studying this issue. We started to survey, so we're just simply asking for permission to do what you all have asked us to do.
So, what we're looking for is a, is a motion to expand in-person instruction to four days a week to any student requesting to do so, beginning tomorrow. Do I have such a motion?
I make a motion to expand in-person instruction beginning tomorrow. And thank you, Dr. Thomas.
You're welcome.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Bundy?
Aye.
Opposed?
Um, my vote is aye.
Go ahead.
Dr. Thomas?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, of course, my vote is aye. I do understand that you indicated that we could start this earliest tomorrow. Um, do you think that it's best that we give, like, a notification out and perhaps do this maybe next week?
I strongly believe, we had a meeting Friday about this, and we have been talking, and I asked the administrators specifically their recommendation about starting tomorrow. And all three building principals have given me the assurance that they're ready to go.
Okay, so we will give notification out to parents?
I think there have been notifications that have already been going out. It's just a matter of confirming through the Board's formal action.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for the clarification.
There's a lot of an assumption there.
Well, again, this was, the Board asked for this, so we were operating under the assumption that the Board would approve their ask.
I am simply giving you a tough time. We appreciate it, and, you know, we appreciate the preparedness that our administrators are, actions that they're taking, and the openness to change. All right, that motion passed unanimously, so we're moving to Action Item E, which is the School Board Governance Norms and Protocols. I asked that this be made on a regular basis, and I'm specifically looking on page four for the norm that says evaluation of the superintendent. The explanation is that the Board will annually evaluate the superintendent in December, give feedback, and progress reports in April and August. So, this is April, it's time to do a informal. However, we work very closely with Dr. Thomas, and I feel like there's a lot that goes on. So, my question to the Board is, we have two courses that we could go. We could go ahead and schedule the April informal evaluation, and then do another one in August, and then do the formal one in December, meaning that we could meet three times a year for evaluative purposes. Or we could change this norm to say that we would do, give the informal feedback mid-year, which would be June, rather than trying to do it in an evaluation three times during the year. I spoke with him, and he felt like right now we're working in tandem and moving along, and that would be fine with him. So, I wanted to bring it before the Board and see what your feelings are on that. Yeah, he said June would be fine. You're good with June?
Yes.
Everybody's okay? Marlon, you okay if we just do a midterm, informal evaluation, and we'll do that June?
Ms. Bundy?
Yes.
Okay. I need a motion to addend the norm to say that we would do the feedback and progress form in June. Do I have a second?
A second.
I have a motion and a second to change the norm for informal feedback for the superintendent's evaluation to be held in June. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Action Item F, Strategies for the School Board Goal. We discussed this on a couple of occasions. It's on the action item. If we feel that we're still working on them and we're not ready, then we can table it until the next business meeting. But we looked over them last month, and I think that everyone was pretty satisfied with what we had, with the exception of the fourth strategy, which was to increase family engagement in the education of all students. And Ms. Seager proposed two additional activities to go under that. Number three, which is to seek school boards with successful community involvement for partnership, mentoring opportunities, and educate the community on the role and limits of the school.
And I thought I was looking at it a bit better, but, you know, to where it might go, just for consideration of something else.
What if we moved strategy number, what's now three, up to goal three, and please educate the community on the school board limits, role and limits under goal four? Because, I don't know, does that increase family engagement? Yeah, they probably, they'll probably do those a bit better under three. Is that okay with everyone? First of all, is everybody okay with adding those two activities? Yes. Can we move them, having them under goal four, put them under goal three? Okay. Any other discussions or additions or changes that you want to make to these goals, strategies, and activities? If not, I will entertain a motion. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second to approve the strategies, the goals for the school board. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And we will be bringing these back, because these are, these are activities and actions for us as a board. This isn't what we're delegating out, so be prepared. Action Item G is the VSPA Policy Updates. We got the red line versions last month, last meeting. Most of these are terminology changes to make them gender neutral. A few of them are some grammar edits, and there was really nothing to change the policies other than one policy where they deleted a big section, but we cover that under our regulations, so. Do I have any questions on any of these specifically?
Look at policy BDDH. I don't know. I just signed here. I didn't see that.
So, we have a regulation that goes along with that, a regulation or a... Yes. It doesn't have to be, the policy can be general, and then the specifics of it are
That wouldn't eliminate that. I'm just saying.
It's a regulation. So, that's policy BDDH, and then BDDH dash law is the regulation that sets up all the, they have to sign up for, meeting, time limits, and all those kinds of things. Regulation is one that we need, that's individual. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I approve the VSPA Policy Updates.
And a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving to our informational items, the energy savings with Suntribe.
Members of the Board, several of you have asked about the potential savings through the use of solar technology. And keeping with that request, I have invited Mr. Frank Dubek with Suntribe. He is their development manager. Good evening, Mr. Dubek.
Good evening.
And he would like to provide you all with a brief presentation concerning the use of solar as a means of saving the taxpayers some money. Mr. Dubek?
In lieu of a PowerPoint, I have handouts. May I bring those up to you?
And Ms. Saunders, if you would sand these and attach them to Word docs so the public can see them after the fact, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Chairman Hammond, School Board, I'm Frank Dubek, joined by my colleague Seth Herman. We are Suntribe Solar. Tonight, I'm going to give a brief, high-level overview of a solar proposal. So, I've included a presentation for tonight that's got five or six slides, and then for edification, I also have included the proposal that I gave Dr. Thomas about a month ago. And thank you, Dr. Thomas, for entertaining this idea and working with me and for having us here this evening. So, at a very high level, the reason why we can engage in this way is that we're able to sell you electric... to sell you electricity cheaper than your utility. And the proposal I've outlined, I'll just hit you with the punch on here essentially, which is we could save you about $300,000 over 30 years, offsetting 44% of your energy needs for high school and the intermediate school. There'll be no out-of-pocket expenses, no maintenance expenses, and no effects on your C I P budget. In addition, we're a company built on, you know, environmental stewardship, and we would provide energy, excuse me, education grants to help find ways to either amplify what you're doing or create new avenues to build the next generation of environmental stewards, all of which being done through the power purchase agreement. We work with over 20 different schools in the state of Virginia in much, in much the same way. We've earned that distinction through a couple, for a couple of reasons. One is we have outstanding engineering expertise. We have a robust safety ethos, and our comprehensive approach to the projects from beginning to end, shepherding our clients through the entire process. Schools, the feedbacks that schools have given us have been primarily twofold, which is redirecting these savings back into core programs and using solar as a way to approach sustainability objectives. The proposal that I've gotten to, there was a machination of several things. So we looked at your electrical equipment, your rate schedules, your energy bills, we looked at the locations, we looked at, we considered your roofs, your roof ages, available ground space, code requirements. Solar takes many forms. Often in school systems, you will see roof-mounted solar, and you will see ground-mounted solar. A minute ago, Middlesex was mentioned. Pete Gretz is a great client of ours. We did a project with them a couple of years ago. We are huge fans of them, and they are huge fans of us, so we could recommend, when you need a bus tour, please go see the work that we've done with them. In your case, there's an interesting opportunity. Your roof, your roofs do not match with solar. Now, I'm not saying your roofs are bad. What we're talking about here is warranties and lifespan of the roof with the, essentially the lifespan of the solar. You really want those to be simpatico. Otherwise, you can be in a situation where 25 years of solar is on top of a roof that gets, needs to get replaced halfway through the life cycle, and those economics of de-deploying and redeploying just really don't add up. So canopies and carports are really the solution we're proposing for you all at the high school and the intermediate school. They do a couple of things. One, there's going to be increased nighttime saving because of the candle lights, excuse me, the added lights, candle power, so to speak. There's some benefits of inclement weather, in particular, hot sun. Lastly, there's a powerful message that's being sent in a couple of directions. One, your community about what you're doing to, A, save money, and play into your sustainability objectives, but also it's a spark and inspiration potentially for your students who are here who can see something that's really progressive, really hip, and really is going to get their attention, that maybe that can feed into a career path for them or an educational journey. There's multiple slides I tried to provide on what those canopies look like. Some are rendering, some are real photos. And at the end of those photos, I provided an aerial view of the proposed layout for the high school and the intermediate school. And as I wrap up tonight, after those designs of your local schools, we wanted to list a few of our partners, many of which should look familiar to you. I'd be happy to introduce and make connections for any of those customers we've worked with. Moreover, we're really good at getting these types of stories into the media, and we're even better at bringing our clients along for that journey. So if we got the chance to work with you, we expect we would be beating that drum in order to tell the story broadly to your community. That is all I have this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board?
No, it's through a power purchase agreement, which is essentially, in its essence, just an agreement for you to buy the energy produced by the system on your property for a given period of time. So all of our work is really baked into a kilowatt hour rate. We're going to own, maintain, operate the system. Yeah, there's no out-of-pocket, there's nothing that comes from the school systems at all. We're not taking any energy necessarily. All the energy that your system produces is going to go to you and get used. If there's any excess, it'll be net metered through Dominion's net metering program. Yeah, sure. So in its simplest form, your Dominion rate is here, we can produce it here, and we sell it to you at a little bit of a margin.
So sort of team tagging onto his question, would we disconnect our relationship with Dominion and go circular with you, or is this done differently?
No, those are simpatico as well. So you are connected to the grid the entire time. We can't actually produce all the energy you need, especially all the times that you need it, like this evening, for instance. So you will be drawing from the grid.
Basically, I have a question, but it's looking at your cash flow options here.
Sure.
That impact, like are these fixed rates? Is this what you need, or is that average? Would you like to have currently?
So those are just simply two, that's a good question. Simply trying to model out two different options. We're sort of dealing with net present value and the time value of money, and so escalators are one way to make sure that you are in the black, or nearing the black early in the process. So that can fluctuate depending on what type of a range, and honestly, it would suit you all best.
Was this the first school system?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of who would be the very first customer. Middlesex has been a customer for a long time. Recently worked for News in Virginia Beach.
Yeah, so Middlesex, which I'm sure you've seen, we've actually been brought back to do multiple projects in Middlesex. We've come back to Westmoreland twice as well. Fairfax, Arlington, Hanover, Henrico, Louisa, Savannah, multiple private schools as well.
Solar in the public sector is kind of a newer thing, so it's not like we have a catalog of, we've been doing this for 25 years just because of the nature of the solar animal, so to speak. Yeah, but there is a list on that page of our customers that's not necessarily exhaustive.
Going back to Mr. Wayne's question, you know, everyone says, how can you do this? How can you sell us electricity for our utility? And I think we've all started to see that solar has been deployed throughout the Commonwealth. A big reason for that is it's actually the cheapest form of renewable energy. So what we didn't see with power purchase agreements until about five years ago, and as the cost of solar panels decreased, all of a sudden, people like us could come in and say, we'll build you a solar rate on your property. We'll sell you that electricity cheaper than you're getting electricity from utility, and we'll do that on-site. And that's what is called a power purchase agreement, and that's all we do.
Yeah, so our, let's see, we're going to start with this one. Over the last 15 years, Dominion rates have gone up 2.5%, 3% year-over-year on average. And so we expect to be trailing that, so that that savings, as time grows, the savings grows. No, I mean, I guess that would be the one place of exposure potentially in this deal. So sometimes I've said if cold fusion was invented, yes, that would happen, but nothing in history has said that that's actually the case.
And that is a great question. So we actually have a utility scalearm of our company as well. We build a lot of projects for Dominion, and so in this option, you've seen some escalators. When we build projects for Dominion, they set our escalator at 2%. And so that means that every year, that rate goes up by 2%, and then they're taking that electricity and they're selling it to consumers. And so when you think about where will the price of electricity go, and historically, you've seen it transact at 2.5% over the last 15 years, all indicators show that that would continue. Now, to answer your question, Mr. Wayne, you actually are getting a rate now, you're locking in now, so you can pay 2020 electric prices, you know, 10, 20, 30 years from now, depending on how you want, what option you choose, whether that's a 0% escalator or an escalator that's below the market average, so you can get year-over-year savings.
And this is for the intermediate school and the high school. Was the elementary school not dual or was there a reason?
Correct. So when we're looking at siting options, we're trying to figure out, how much space do we have to actually build what we need? How much can we build? Are there trees, things that are obstructions? And a series of things went into precluding that site.
Can we harness student energy?
Sorry, can you say that?
Can we harness student energy?
Put that in our 2023 plan?
Other questions?
Anything else?
So is it, if I were a teacher again, and I were parking at an intermediate school every day, and I got to park under there, there would also be a little sidebar of having shade in my car instead of the sunlight glaring into my car all day long?
You got it. That's exactly right.
So there's a little side benefit for... I really appreciate this. Myself and Mr. Whitaker have for years asked for information on this. We would like to personally, for sustainability, and also to model for our students. If this world is going to go beyond the next 20 to 30 years, then our students have need to see how we are going to do that, and we need to be the trendsetters for that. So I'm very interested, and I will look at this, and we will discuss it further. But I really appreciate you coming tonight and presenting to us.
Thank you very much for having us. It's our pleasure. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Have a great evening.
I want to ask you another question. From a student's perspective, but a potential employment, what's the future for students going forward for your type of company?
Yeah, like Virginia really is where the internet was. Solar Virginia is sort of where the internet was in 2000. So the future does look very bright for energy as a whole, in particular for renewable energy in the future, whether it's the offshore wind that they're doing in Virginia Beach, or the expanse of solar that's happened in Virginia. It feels really good.
Thank you.
Just to build on that real quick, we actually have just recently hired a sixth-grade lead math teacher who's decided to leave the school system to join our company. She's a member of the state curriculum SOL board as well. And a big reason that we're doing that is there's a lot of folks like you and school boards who said, how can we integrate this with our C T E programs? How can we get curriculum and real hands-on learning experiences for our students? So that's one way that, starting at the end of next month, we'll have a new member that would be dedicated to projects just like this and working with your administration.
Glad you got that perspective, but you may not steal any of our teachers.
I was going to say, we will not make a habit of that. Thank you all. It's great to see you all tonight. Have a good one. Take care.
All right, I need to jump backwards because we added an action item H, and I drew an arrow to the bottom, so I probably will not see it until we already close. So we're going to go back to action item H, which is the addendum to the pay classification book. Ms. Gross has discovered a discrepancy in equity in our payment of some after-school tutoring programs, specifically at the high school. And so our pay classification book states that we will pay $25 an hour for after-school remediation. However, at two of our schools, teachers are being paid for a grant, and they're being paid at $35 an hour. And so in order to, to need some equity amongst the high schools, I would like a motion to increase after-school remediation paid $35 per hour. Will that do it, Ms. Gross?
Madame Chair, I move that we increase the pay for each S teacher's wanting to tutor from $25 at the rate until $35.
Do I have a second? Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Could you hear that discussion, Ms. Bundy?
Ms. Bundy?
It's a lot of thoughtful, I really can't hear a lot when someone is speaking unless you hear, I do apologize.
The discussion pertained to amending the pay classification book to reflect an hourly pay rate of $35 an hour, which is consistent with the practice in the lower schools, staff members who are being paid $35 an hour through several of our grants. So the amendment is to adjust the pay classification book to reflect $35, $35 an hour hourly pay for staff members.
That's an aye for me.
Thank you.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. That'll bring us to informational item B, which is the 2021-2022 Perkins Grant.
Good evening, Dr. Thomas and board members.
Good evening.
I have presented the 2021-2022 Perkins Grant. The Perkins Grant is used to improve our secondary career and technical education program here at Essex County Public Schools. We use the Perkins Grant for updating equipment, professional development, contracted services, industry credential testing, assisting with the cause of sending our students to the Golden Neck Technical Center as well. The expected allocations on the cover sheet are under the costed budget and in the Perkins Grant under the C Temps budget Schedule 17 and 18. And I'll take any questions if you have any on this particular plan.
The legislature of the funds was very well detailed and outlined, and so it's satisfactory as far as, in my opinion, it was.
Thank you. Ms. Duane, just to give your informations that should be worth to the board. The Perkins Grant is one of the grants that we just don't note the actual funding approval for next year. We approve it at this year's rate. It will be different, but the projects themselves will not change. So the dollar amount may change based on what's allocated from the state. All right, and this will come back as an action item to us next meeting, I guess, in the business meeting?
Yes.
Next month. Thank you.
Thank you.
Information item C, the 2021 Essex High School commencement exercise.
I invite Mr. Barfield to come and just share some details about graduation. I know, of course, there are probably lots of questions, so Mr. Barfield, please share.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Thomas, Ms. Saunders.
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, Dr. Thomas, Ms. Saunders, Ms. Garnett. So I'd like to begin just making sure, um, that you know, our planning team has been working hard since March 3rd. And what we've, um, made a decision on is that whatever format we decide on, we want to make sure it's the best option for our graduates, to make sure it's a joyful, safe, celebratory environment. So with that, we considered three options. The first is our traditional model, which is the typical processional. And then the second format we s, we talked about was our social distancing model. And essentially what that is, it kind of mimics what you all did last year, where there's a group of students that entered from the side of the stage. We called their names, um, they received their diploma, and then they exited out to the, um, other side of the auditorium. And then the third option that we considered was, um, an eight-to-10 minute format. And what that would look like is we put out a signup list where families can sign up for a 10-minute increment. And in that 10 minutes, we still call their name, we'll play Pop and Circumstance, award the diploma, and give them six or seven minutes to take photos. They exit out, and then the next, um, family would come in. So with that, we decided we would do, uh, Model B, which was the, um, divide the alphabet into three thirds. Um, and then we'll have, graduation began at nine o'clock, and we will send out letters to families indicating what time they should come. Of course, we'll make provisions for siblings that may have different last names and things of that nature. One of the things that we also considered was, um, regalia. Um, and what I mean by that is last year, there was a table set up where students will receive their regalia the day of. We've eliminated that, um, to reduce congestion, reduce the congregating in one area. So regalia will be given out by the club sponsor prior to graduation, no later than, uh, June 3rd. And then it will be the graduate's responsibility to show up with their regalia. Another thing we considered, um, changing is just the program. Um, we want to condense it in size just to save some money. So that will be a, a huge change. Our band director, Ms. Ficklin, has, um, assumed the music responsibility. Ideally, we'd like to have a chorus or a band playing, but due to our numbers, that won't be possible. So we'll just have a CD playing, uh, Pop and Circumstance. One of the biggest differences you'll see this year will be the attire of our graduates. Um, I like to make sure graduation is a dignified event. So our graduates will be required to dress accordingly, uh, which means white shirts and ties for gentlemen, no jeans, no khakis. Um, and females will be dressed appropriately based on the school code of conduct. Obviously, you won't be able to see what's underneath, but they can't, they have to come dressed appropriately. Um, that's a, a, a non-negotiable. Uh, students who don't have those, uh, items, we have plenty, plenty of community members who are dying to help. So shirt and ties are not even a, uh, a barrier, belts aren't a barrier. We have the resources to provide our students. And we've already begun communicating that. Just so you know, each Monday, I send out a senior-only message. Um, I previously was sending it out on Sundays, and I switched to Mondays to make sure that rain is not going to out, outwash me. I switched to Mondays to make sure the message didn't get lost in our Sunday communications. So they have a specific Monday where they will receive information on the seniors. Um, so they're already aware, they've been made aware of the attire requirement. It's also posted in their Google Classroom folder for seniors. So, um, the attire again will be a crucial part of, uh, our graduation. Our salutatorian and our valedictorian haven't been selected yet. Um, they are a tenth of a point apart. Um, so we looked at the third nine weeks, and they were still a tenth of a part, a point apart. So we've been waiting a little bit longer, um, to be, so we could determine who has awarded that title. As you know, it's a very prestigious title, and they're just dialing back and forth. So as soon as we have that, we'll give them some criteria on speeches. Those will be pre-recorded, um, as well as, um, our first commencement speech. And then, of course, Dr. Thomas's as well. Um, and then lastly, Herb Jones, our vendor, um, has set up a capping gown distribution that's going to be on April 28th and April 29th. There are some seniors who have yet to order their capping gown, so they will have another opportunity on April 28th and 29th. If they want to order anything else, announcements, et cetera, they can go online and do that. So in a nutshell, that's our plan. Questions, comments, concerns?
Did you give a date?
Yes, sir. It's gonna be Saturday, June 5th, beginning at 9:00 AM for that first group.
9:00 AM?
And, yes, sir. And just so you know, each graduate will receive six tickets and two parking passes. The graduate will not need a ticket for admission. And the main reason that we've selected the, um, option of dividing the students into thirds is because of the executive order. Uh, with the indoor, if we, if you try to do it at 500, uh, capacity, then the, the number of guests that students could have would be dropped significantly. So we'd rather more family members come for them and enjoy that moment. And then also, we have some graduates, we have at least a handful of graduates that I can think of off-hand that can't be in that, uh, large crowd due to health concerns. So we want to keep them in consideration as well. And then there's just, you know, people still concerned about the pandemic that we have still going on. Any other questions for me?
Thank you very much. Again, thank your staff and all those working on it.
I'd just like to thank you for the rescue.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Barfield. Um, Dr. Chandler has provided you all with some details concerning summer school. Um, so any questions you might have, you can direct it to Dr. Chandler. Chandler, you're on the floor.
Good evening, school board members, Dr. Thomas and Ms. Saunders. You have some general information here. And the first thing that I'd like to say is that my planning team is composed of the three assistant principals. Who will each be the principal of their summer school, which will all be held at Essex High School. So Ms. Slater will be working with the elementary children, Ms. Rajan with intermediate school children, and Mr. Dublin with the high school students. In addition, Mr. Dublin gets to do a few extra duties since he's at the high school. So he's helping me with the scheduling of rooms, uh, signing computer carts, et cetera. One of the questions that's come up is about being at the high school with the youngest children. So we will be moving some furniture over there, uh, for the, the kindergartners and first graders most likely. Also, we will be moving a couple of computer carts because the elementary children are accustomed to using the touchscreen computers. Tomorrow, the first notification will go out via school messenger to families, which is just a general, uh, informational piece to let them know what's happening. And then what the summer school principals, the regular principals are working on is a list of students that will be, uh, recommended and required to come to summer school. For those of you who might remember back to the summer of 2019, at the elementary school, actually, it was even before that, that year, maybe two years before that even. At the elementary school and intermediate school, the programs were enrichment programs. Uh, this year, they will really be working on remediation and skills work. And there'll be fun engagement programs, but the orientation will be a little bit different. We're in the process of working on all the different people that we need to hire. And you'll see that coming up very soon, you'll get the names and so forth to approve at a school board meeting. Transportation will be done through community stops, and the meals will be grab-and-go breakfast and lunch. We are planning for this to be a 100% in-person summer school. What the teachers and administrators have noted is that the children who are having the most difficulty are, in many cases, the children who have been virtual the whole time. I won't read everything to you, but do you have any questions for me at this time? And again, I'm delighted to work with these three individuals as my summer school principals. I, I like this model. If you remember in the past, Ms. Calhoun, just by the way that things happened, she ended up being the summer school principal over and over and over again. And I will miss working with her, but I'm sure she's glad to get up this role. And it's really, it's really very fun to work with these three. Also, you might have noted that we have now two administrative interns also. So these are individuals who are working on their administrative, uh, what do you call it? Certification. So they will be serving as interns and an extra sets of hands during summer school. And we will give more details as time goes on.
Thank you, Dr. Chandler.
Thank you.
Action item E, Classification and Compensation Study.
Ms. Gross.
Okay. I also have, um, Steve Minor on the phone with me, and he is from Baker Tilly. And he's gonna be available in case you have any questions. Um, so here we have the, uh, Classification and Compensation Study information. At Essex County School Board, you guys requested information about conducting a classification and compensation study. Um, we reached out to as many companies as we could find that offered the service. Three of the companies actually followed up with quotes. Uh, we met virtually with those three companies. Baker Tilly came out on top as, as being, uh, a company that really matched our needs. So we had multiple meetings with Baker Tilly. Um, we also had the proposed contract vetted by our school lawyer. And it is our recommendation that, um, we proceed with the Classification and Compensation Study with one conducted by Baker Tilly. Um, they were the lowest bid that will provide a maintenance system and training, which will allow Essex County Public Schools to conduct this work in the future. Um, attached, you will see the contract as well as the presentation, um, from Baker Tilly. And I have Steve Minor on the line if you have any questions. This is informational, of course.
I understand the purpose of this study is solely to compare our compensation for certain positions with those around us.
With that and more. So the question was, is this solely to compare our compensation with the positions around us? Um, Steve, would you like to provide some information about what all this study provides the school system?
Of course. Uh, thank you very much, sir. Good evening. Uh, I'm in the board, Dr. Thomas. Uh, the votes on the senior package is, uh, is getting detailed. Certainly would refer you to that for further detailed answers. Uh, but, uh, our system relies on our clients. Although, uh, they wish to be compared to. The one answer is our recommendation is to say, yes, you look at those, uh, uh, folks in your, in your region that you're competing for talent, uh, a catch. Uh, and that's generally how that's, uh, how that's done. Uh, however, it is, at the end of the day, your decision, or the client's decision, as to who you wish to be compared to. Uh, we, um, we, uh, do have methodologies we can utilize. We have with some clients, uh, relative to using, uh, data further away. But as a rule, uh, you like to look at, uh, localities or peer organizations that are similar to you, um, in size. So, uh, obviously, what they do, um, so that's, uh, hopefully, uh, follows your question. But, uh, in general, it's in your region, and specifically, uh, it will be a list determined by the school system.
Steve, can you add a summary of the other items besides your, besides the comparison?
I'm sorry. Uh, actually, I apologize. I'm not quite able to read the other items. Uh, the bottom line is, uh, compensation, classification study, as we have proposed, will include a number of items. Uh, for your professionals, it's going to be primarily focused on professional employees. It will primarily focus on competitive salaries. Uh, we go market salary, uh, survey, uh, finding out what are their designated in your region of making or that list, that peer group that you, uh, that you all have related to us. We'll find out what professionals and others are making in your system. Um, you then, um, we got data back. We will have, in the meantime, uh, issued a position analysis questionnaire, which moves out to all of your employees, advising us of what their duties are. Um, we then, utilize that information to set up new, uh, job descriptions. So you will end up with a new set of job descriptions when this is finished. We'll al, we'll also use that information, uh, to determine classification. Uh, and when we get to data to that, we actually will be extracting these proposed pay scales for your, for your various employees. It's to be determined how many scales, so certainly, you'll then want, uh, scale, probably several scales, professionals, paraprofessionals, um, age, uh, bus drivers. Uh, so there's a, a variety of pay scales. But again, people endeavor and relate the market so that when we're done, the pay scales we provide you, the draft or proposed scales, uh, will be competitive, um, with others, with your peer organization, for each of those groups or types of employees, and certainly including your professional. When we're done, uh, specifically, uh, we'll be training you on the, use of our system. We call it SAFE, S-A-F-E, the Safe System Assembly, uh, just as a description of a, systematic analysis and factor evaluation, as the system will use. It's a much-based system, uh, we use for all positions, other than, again, other than your professionals. Uh, they will not be pointed. Uh, there's no point in doing that, there's no benefit in that, because they're all essentially at the same rate. We'll also be looking at, uh, supplements provided by other, uh, competing jurisdictions, um, uh, peer groups, and, uh, we'll be factoring those into our recommendations as well. Is this, uh, do, is that a little more for, uh, Angela, or is that helpful?
Um, that does. And, um, one of the reasons why this was, this proposal stood out is because when it's done, it leaves us with a system where we can continue this work on our own, given the system that they will train us to use. Um, the other proposals did not include, um, a plan for how to continue this. Any other questions?
Uh, yes. I saw in the package, there's a pretty hefty hourly rate for the different people involved in this. Is there any idea how much this is going to cost?
Um, yes. The proposal has the, the quote in it, um, of 39, which is the cost budgeted, 39,000. Um, those hourly rates were if they, um, did special things or went over. And we don't, we plan for them to do the work virtually, so we would not be paying for them to travel. We would not be paying them, you know, for those extra items that were, you probably saw in the proposal.
Roughly what's the time, um?
Time frame for completing? That's the only thing I didn't see, was roughly how long are we looking to take to do this?
Yeah. I believe if you, um, scroll down in the engagement letter, you'll find a timeline. Um, Steve, do you want to review that quickly, the proposed timeline?
Of course.
Page SAH.
I need to find that document. I had it pulled up in the app.
Page 10?
I'm working on it.
It's page SAH.
Other things, uh, that you guys were working on, so I'll have to find it. The, um, yeah. So that's the timeline. Yeah. What we did, um, was provided, uh, it's a little mind-blowing confusing. We provided, uh, dates between, uh, tasks or tasks, how each task can perform, uh, with a starting date of, uh, proposed, uh, June 11th. And that's just simply our next board meeting. I know you're, you know, if you determined to start tonight, and you approved it tonight, uh, that date would be changed, but the dates to achieve the same item would not, uh, would not change. So again, the overall time to complete the project would not change. Those are our dates. Uh, and then, of course, as soon as it, you know, uh, because this is a bit of a derivative stuff. You do things, you do things sometimes in the after-schedule meetings and so forth. So, uh, hopefully, we can meet that schedule. Um, usually, uh, that's just the way projects have to work. But now that's, that is, uh, that's, uh, our, our sense of what the project should be done by.
All right. So, um, page 10 does out. All right, so, um, page 10 does outline a series of dates between June 11th, um, and then wrapping up with the final report, uh, on or after October the 5th.
Actually, it begins on the page before that, actually. Oh, right, May 11th. The example began on May 11th.
I'm sorry, I, 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 I was on the wrong page. May 11th, and then again, that's, uh, that's just simply your next board meeting date, uh, and so I recollect.
Can we get a guarantee completion date? I, I know it says to be determined, and part of that would be when they began, but we would need it completed by the end of November to be useful in our budget process, am I correct?
Okay, the question is, could we have a concrete end date that would be before November?
Before the end of November?
Before the end of November.
October 5th? Uh, I'm sorry, it's the October 5th date, uh, on schedule. Uh, that is a, you know, that is a solid date, assuming that, again, they're all able to be, your, your individual requirements, uh, which actually, you know, is quite good, but yes, that's, uh, that's what you, come in at that time.
My other question is more budgetary for the superintendent. First of all, this is informational because it's only 39,000, and so it's, you know, however, will the cost be split between two budget years, since it begins in one and ends in the other?
We, we'll have to work out those details, but I guess the most important thing is how we're going to pay for it, and we're going to pay for it through Medicaid reimbursement.
Okay.
So we received notification, Dr. Temple gave me notification of medical reimbursement, uh, revenue that will be used to cover this completely.
Anybody hear that? Any other questions? This looks very comprehensive, I mean, I don't know what the third quote was like, but this was very well done.
The, the reason why the recommendation is this company is not only is this very comprehensive compared to the other companies, but when we have called and Sabrina sat in with me on, on some meetings as well, um, but we asked them a bajillion questions, and Steve and his company are able to answer us. Um, and it, you know, it, it gives us a, a feeling of competence, um, that, that they will carry out with the finished product, that, that will, um, be very worthwhile. So this is our recommendation.
Did we give referrals from other school systems? I'm sorry, did we give referrals from other school systems? Thank you.
Uh, no, I've reached out to some different organizations, and some people were not happy with the ones that they had completed, so we didn't go that route.
Are the questions or comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you all very much, uh, we, uh, look forward to the opportunity, and, uh, if there are any questions in the meantime, please let us know, we'll be more than happy to respond, and thank you so much. Have a good evening.
Thanks, Steve. Bye-bye. Informational item F, the concession stand renovation update.
Um, Dr. Temple's here to provide a few details regarding the updates thus far. Dr. Temple?
Sure. So we would like to give you an update on the concession stand. The concession stand work officially began on April the 1st, 2021. Brooks &amp; Company Construction have been in the building and have started the ven- renovation work. They have received all the necessary county permits. They have started the demolition of the walls and the doors. The plumber is currently taking measurements and will be bringing in some material, um, in the later part of this week. The focus next week will be preparing to accommodate for the new piping in the building and also finishing any additional dem- demolition that needs to be done. Mr. Hoover has been conducting daily walkthroughs, and starting next week, I will be doing weekly walkthroughs. So that's where we're at right now, it's pretty much just that they're demolishing everything and getting everything cleared out so they can start building for us.
What is the expected completion date?
Yes, so the targeted completion date is July 9th.
July?
July the 9th.
Yeah, so, um, the way we're handling this project from a budgetary standpoint is, of course, uh, the use of ESER funds can be applied to, uh, various aspects of our budget, operations, personnel. Um, there is no supplement versus supply calls pertaining to the ESER fund, so as we apply those funds to personnel and operations areas, we can free those funds up to pay for the cost of this project. In addition, um, ESER funds can be used for construction matters as well, so we, we'll use those funds to, to pay for the project in its entirety.
Other questions, comments, input from board?
Essentially, it's, it's leaving the burden from our county from having to use those funds, uh, so it essentially comes off of the CIP, and it's something that we've been able to do as a school division.
Correct. No cost to the taxpayer at all. This is something that wa- has been on the CIP, uh, since 2018, I believe, um, and, um, we're finally going to complete the project.
Any other questions? All right. We look forward to seeing how that goes. Informational item G, the facility requests. Um, community college one, pre-recording of college commencement is what's listed on here, so does that mean that they're not going to be, they're not holding commencement here? They're just doing the parks like they did last year? Okay, good, all right. And then the parks and recreation, I don't see anywhere on there, is that like for open night, or for pickleball, or for summer camp? Well, I see parks and rec- summer camps, and it'll be, they're doing it every day, and how does that work with you?
Do we know how many participants will be involved in that? Okay, we're going to gather some more details about that.
She put on here that all, all cleaning supplies and, and even trash bags would be supplied, and there wouldn't be any cost to us on that, but I, I would just want to make sure that we were following all the...
Yeah, I, I'll look at the, uh, the scope of work and, and make certain that we are in compliance with the Government's Executive's Order 72.
I'm hoping that'll change by, by that time. Anybody else have questions on those two? All right, and we can move to school board reports. Mr. Whitaker, you got something?
I'm not sure, I'm busy. I just, first of all, I want to, uh, thank Dr. Thomas for all the work and putting forth the budget plan, and, uh, and his staff, uh, and particularly, uh, their efforts in both, uh, the joint board meetings, uh, where you responded, presented and responded to the questions that were raised by the individual board members. Uh, I also want to thank Denise for her, because I did hear you, you did help out with some responses, so I appreciate that. And I, I know we don't answer directly, but I just want to say to all parents, to all students and teachers, uh, this board really wants to support you in this year's 21-22 school upcoming budget. Uh, we have worked hard, uh, particularly when it comes to what COVID has done to our school system, has been devastating. Our teachers, our kids have to endure either being taught by a teacher who's all teaching in the classroom as well as virtually. That is not easy. As a former teacher, I don't know how we did it in you, just in the classroom itself, but you literally have to make sure that people sign on, because that's a challenge. Normally, the kid is in front of you, and you can do it, but, but to our teachers, I say hats off to you, to our students. Let's, let's talk about them too, that it's not easy to get a child to be focused to video, that's not a game. You, you talk about the teachers in front of them. I particularly want to encourage our board supervisors to understand that Dr. Thomas was asked a question, how can we help? His response was fund our budget. My message to everyone to understand that we've approved the budget, but we don't fund it. You know, we don't have any fiscal, uh, capabilities of funding a budget. And I'm not saying that they don't want to fund, fund the budget, I don't want to imply that, but obviously, there's a certain level where we have to fund the budget, because we, we put together what is called a needs budget, it's based on need, it's not a desire, it's not a Christmas present that we're looking forward to, so, uh, I, I, I encourage everyone to understand the importance of funding, because we're not fiscal agents, we cannot raise money, we can't do anything, uh, we're grateful for what we get, and we are good stewards. We were able to cut significantly, uh, funding for this year's budget, and we were able to cut significantly for the budget, the, the future budget. So I'm simply saying that, uh, to all our board members, this is not a speech to say, I'm speaking for you, this is saying I'm speaking for Ray Whitaker. Obviously, these words cover where we stand as a board, so I want to clear, this is not saying this is not a board field, but I certainly want to stress to the public the importance of funding. I realize the restraints, I'm a taxpayer, just like everybody else, because I understand the constraints that the county has, but at the same time, we have to understand that children are our future. I'll say that again, that children are our future, and without us, then where would we, where would the kids be for tomorrow? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whitaker. I think the, the sentiments and hope that as our community speaks out, that the board supervisors will hear and recognize the needs, and, um, I, I, um, I feel like what we put together did save money for the county, and it does meet our needs, and, uh, so... Anybody, any other board reports or comments? Do I have a motion to adjourn? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'm not even given an option to propose. Thank you, Ms. Bundy.
Thank you.